Yeah, how are you?
Uh, you do.
You say I'm good, Douglas.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it to wake up. All right, yes.
All right, folks, we're gonna do salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Act of the United States of America to remember for which is unnameable under God and for the vote to be discussed as this whole.
Any announcements? I have an announcement. I recognize the, oh, my thing's not on, so. I'd like to recognize the Little Compton lifeguards and first responders that risked their lives to save, uh, uh, risked their lives, um, just try to save Aldino, Santio, and his brother Valder from a horrific drowning. Let's take a moment of silence for those two brothers. Thank you. Under announcements, our now Department of Valuable Management has recently implemented an E-performing process with several water-related permits. Please visit R I D E M website for further information. To have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the July tenth, twenty twenty five meeting unless anybody has any comments, questions on it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you. Request for legal service from town boards, committees, and commissions. I see none here. Thank you. Department head reports. There was none this cycle. Full business. Receive letters of interest to fill the unexpired term of the town moderator and consider an appointment. Carol, how many applicants do we have?
Have one.
We have one. Is he qualified?
Motion to appoint Larry Anderson as the interim moderator.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Larry. You're back.
Larry.
Winter view needed. New business. Presentation by tree warden on the invasive emerald ash borer and the impact it is having on the many trees in town. How are you, sir? Tree warden, how are you?
Pretty well. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, council members, and thank you to Councilwoman Teldit for inviting me to speak about Emerald Dash Borer's arrival here in Little Compton. Emerald Dash Borer, or E A V, have been in our surrounding states for years now. Other areas closer to the state border have already been devastated by this pest. I believe that we have been spared up to this point because we are a peninsula. E A V is an invasive woodbore beetle native to Northeast Asia. This beetle is not considered invasive in its native habitat and is considered a secondary pest attacking only weaker ash trees. It was likely introduced in the nineteen nineties by way of wood packaging or unseasoned olive material used in shipping. E A V was first noticed in Michigan in two thousand and two and has spread over the entire eastern U.S. The spread is expected to continue west and will eventually affect the entire country as our ash trees did not go evolve with this pest. The Emerald Dash Borer life cycle typically takes one year to complete, but can go longer in colder climates. The adults are easily recognizable as they are bright metallic green. They emerge from the tree in late spring or early summer and lay eggs deep in the ridges of the ash. The eggs hatch in roughly two weeks and the larva pours into the tree feeding on the outer layers of the trees, which contains the tree's vascular system. This disrupts the tree's ability to move water and nutrients, ultimately killing it quickly. Then it overwinters in the tree and emerges through a distinctive D-shaped hole. So that would be a D basically twenty above with the flat part on the bottom. Uh, de-shave the exit hole in the spring or early summer to maintenance start cycle over. In my time working for the town of Tree Little Compton, I have seen many pests and fungal infestations come and go, but this one is more dangerous. Ash trees have a very low moisture content compared to most other trees. In fact, it is the only wood around here that burns cleanly when still green. This factors into how quickly a dead ash can become a problem. I have seen a broken oak branch hang on for years before finally letting go. Ash trees lose fertility quickly after dieback because of low moisture content and less fibrous wood than others, ma- making an infected ash tree potential hazard in only one season. Other pests like winter moth and beach leaf disease can take many years to weaken the tree enough to kill it. E A V happens fast. One season infected without treatment is often enough to kill the tree. After a forty percent ground loss, the tree cannot be saved by pesticides. Right now, the only treatment is a preemptive systemic injection of a pesticide every year. Minocloprid is commonly used in this application. This can become very expensive if the person has multiple trees that they want to try to save. All that being said, there are going to be many dead ash around town. The heaviest pockets of infestation that I have seen are on West Main Road, North and South and Snell Road and South Commons Road. This pest will generally attack the weakest trees first, like most pests. The oldest, most mature trees and trees with pre-existing conditions are much more susceptible to any infection. As tree wardens, we can handle the ash dieback on the town roads. My concern is getting DOT down here to the proverbial end of the line, my way. A dead ash tree poses much more of a threat more quickly than other tree pest combinations. Thank you. Any questions?
Is there any, I have a question. Thank you for coming.
No problem.
And, um, is there?
Send a email or two pictures. I don't know what this.
I don't know if I. Did you send it to me or Carol?
I sent him, well, I sent it to both of you, but I sent it very late.
Don't think we saw it.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
No problem.
But no, thank you for explaining that. And, um, is there anything, uh, that you would say to people here or listening at home, uh, for advice or anything that you would say to us as a council that you think that we could or should be doing?
I think it's gonna be around forever. Uh, customers who do want treated that I've come across at this point generally tend to be older folks. A few more years with their trees and I can understand that. Um, but as far as doing it for a long time, I don't see how it's economically sustainable for folks. Even to us again.
And how about, um, planting plans? Are people, uh, like not planting ash because of this? Or are you recommending that people don't in their, in their?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's eventually going to attack whole ash. I think that like most tree pests, some trees will be more resistant uh, than others, and they're the ones that are going to live on and get stronger. Um, but that's, uh, but it's going to take most of, um, it's already basically from the eastern half of the United States over.
Thank you.
Do you have a question for our tree wardens, um, or would you like to make a comment at the podium?
I have a question.
Yeah.
You wanna say it loudly so the people at home can hear it?
Uh, Sal Marinosi, um, I, I would like to know if, uh, there's any uh, potential jumping of trees. Uh, because sometimes they they run out of trees in areas and they, you know, because there's such an infestation that they'll go to other trees. What, what, have you heard or seen any of that?
Jason, can you repeat the question in the microphone so the people at home can hear it and then answer it? Sal, we're good. Thanks, buddy. If you could repeat the question in the microphone and then answer it.
Okay.
In the microphone.
Can the beetle that causes the ash tree infestation jump to other trees? Right now, the answer is no. I mean, excuse me, that's definitely something that science does. Watching, um, certainly as far as beach leaf disease, that's even bigger concern. Um, it's another phenomenon in the freezing out here that we can't get right now.
Right.
Um, but with Emerald Dash Borer, it's been in the other countries since, been in this part of the country since, uh, nineteen ninety three, I think, or ninety four. So, um, and it hasn't jumped yet.
But the reason, the reason I'm asking the question is I was in Southern Italy. And they went from one tree and now they attacked the olive trees. And all the olive trees that are over two hundred years old.
Right.
Are dying.
Right.
Yeah.
And if only all pests are gonna go after the oldest trees first. Um, that's unfortunate, that's even greater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thanks, Jason, as al- as always. Thanks for everything you do for the town. I have new business too. Harbor Commission Recommendation on Traffic Management. That's the Con at Harbor. Um, I talked with the DPW director. It looks like there's some canisters down there. It's a hundred and fifty a month. They wanna put it into the DPW budget. He was all for it. Um, am I missing anything on it? Is that about right? I'm happy to make a motion to do that.
Second.
Any, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Free request from the Director of Public Works. The council to consider a proposed transfer station traffic pattern for roadway to and from the yard waste area. Carrie, do we have that on the, on here?
No, he didn't get me anything.
He's not here today. And this is really not something that is, is gonna happen uh, within the next month or so. So I'm, I'm happy to table this. So when he can come in two weeks to discuss it and we can have it on, on up here and we can have a good conversation about it.
If I might suggest that we do it when we have a, a clear picture of our financial position. I'm not inclined to invest in optional things. I think it's, I think it's a great thing. Man, I think it's a worthy thing. But I don't think it's something that rises to the level of what we wanna add to our capital. When our capital plan is, is, uh, in jeopardy at the moment. In the sense of it, knowing how many, how much funding. So I would, I would move that we, uh, table this matter until we have from the finance director a clear picture of our financial status, at which time we bring it back for consideration.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Four, authorized application for a C R M C permit to extend and upgrade the parking area at Seconic Point. I'm happy to make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? I have a hand. Go right ahead, sir. Right to the microphone.
Thank you. Brought some notes here, so bear with me.
Just for the record, your name, please.
Uh, my name is Scott Brown.
Thank you.
Former Commodore of the Seconic Yacht Club. I, uh, have been president of Friends of Scott Lighthouse for the past fifteen years. Currently in custody at the Nature Conservancy of Rhode Island in Providence. So, uh, thank you for your time on this. There's lots to unpack regarding what happened beginning of this week. The future of this. Uh, first and foremost, I was known, you know, every captain in the harbor. Uh, I've been buried all my whole life and I appreciate what these guys do. And none of my thoughts should be considered affront to any of my thoughts and and the thoughts of my neighbors. Rhode Island Avenue area. So again, I don't wanna come off as unappreciative, but it seems that a lot of constituents of this council are a little concerned the way things have been heading lately. We got a million dollars missing or unaccounted for in the budget. And.
I, I would just say we, we don't have a million dollars missing. Uh, we didn't lose a bag of a million dollars on the road somewhere.
I'm just looking at what I read.
Just to be clear.
And again, I don't wanna, I'm gonna talk to you guys like I would be talking to Gary at the harbor. It's just, uh, uh, what comes up. But I, I would think you guys, after something like that and the bad press, would wanna fly low and straight for a few days. And then, uh, earlier this week, sunny day in July, guys decided to excavate the last green parcel along the harbor's edge. Now, this is a lot which immediately butts the harbor and highly protective barrier, protected barrier. And this was all done without any engineering, federal approvals, state approvals, town building department approvals, D E M approval, and no erosion controls. So, uh, I do get the town using, uh, their own equipment and personnel because this is really, uh, something that no private contractor would touch in a million years without all those approvals in place. So I guess where I would start is where did this scheme come from? Who proved it? I mean, this just seems so off the grid. Is any, can anyone tell me where this
It's my, it's my understanding that we voted on this. Uh, we didn't need C R M C approval on what we voted on. And what happened down there was more than what we voted on and certainly did need C R, C R M C approval. So I stopped it when I heard about it. Um, and we're here to, uh, vote for C R M C approval. And even further than that, you know, it was on the agenda. Um, and I'll take responsibility for, you know, if you're gonna do something down there at Seconic Point, you know, where's the plans? Where's all those things? So that kept, you know, you know, I'll just speak for myself. I didn't think we were gonna be that invasive with it, right? So we didn't need C R M C approval. But, you know, obviously I'll be better uh, when we, uh, have agenda items like that. Um, but it was, uh, paused and stopped. And it was put back. And we're here today to get if, if that's what we're gonna do to move forward, the correct C R M C approval. That's how I saw it from sitting at my desk that day in July.
Inspector Candor, is solicitor involved in this?
Well, I'm a solicitor.
Yeah.
May I answer?
Sure.
And I was president of what was taken. I'm also C R M C council.
I understand.
And what was the fault? Didn't need C R M C approval. I understand some work was done there which disturbed the coastal feature. That does need the C R M C permitting. That wasn't part of the vote.
Okay. It still happens. So it's a bad note for you guys. We should be. And no one's. One town employee said to me, we should have done this in the middle of winter. To someone alarming.
Yeah, that is a lo- that is alarming.
Yeah. So, uh, anyway, let's move forward. I would like you to take a look and you might be able to listen. Help you with this. Is this the map that we're all currently working off of as far as designation goes? So. Not gonna have a map going on, but that's the current, uh, map, designation map set land in lot four, four thirty.
So this, this, this map came from?
Him. From him. His map came in an email from you, I believe.
Is that, is that map out of, uh?
That came in an email.
No, this is a conceptual plan.
Okay.
From probably nineteen seventy eight, something like that. Here's the plan right here that you wanna see. It's in four, lot four thirty. It's no conservation easement on it. That's one out, right out of the red book.
Okay, they corrected it.
Just one, huh? Oh, send it back over.
He can, he can take that.
I don't have that.
Passing it down.
Now, just, uh, this afternoon, I took a picture on the way over here. You can see it's time stamp. Uh, that was around two o'clock and it's by no means indicative of what happens down there every day. But it is noteworthy for a couple of things. This is a substantial parking area. There are basically the offshore boats that use that harbor regularly and then a handful, five or six, uh, day fishermen. They all fish at different times generally, but that's neither here nor there. It is a substantial parking lot. Uh, yeah. So if you go down there on a daily basis, there is a couple of full-time storage trailers that are there twenty-four seven. The only time they ever leave, these are big industrial trailers and Chief Stephen. And the only time they will leave is to go pick up bait for the boats. And then they return right back to the harbor, no matter when the boat is leaving. Sometimes it could be days. And this creates a terrible stench for all the neighbors. If it's blown out of the north, but if it's blown somewhere else, somebody's getting it. And there's generally a box truck or two down there. Sometimes they have gasoline-powered refrigerators which run around the clock. And they will be there till the boat is coming in to get up to them. So, again, these are totally owned trailers and uh, the noise they make is crazy and the sound they make is gross. Barrels are leaking. If you look underneath them, you'll see puddles of effluent that are just underneath there.
Uh, and I just interrupt you. We only have to talk about what's on the agenda. Art's an open meetings violation. Um, I think what you're talking about is not on the agenda. Um, but can certainly be put on an agenda in two weeks.
Well, I'm, my thought here is maybe we shouldn't be rushing into the taking before we've thought this out. We've lost town landing due to people not, uh, the council not listening to the public and that's gone forever. And I would like to get out ahead of this. And I think there's ways to get more parking into that space.
Instead of the supply block, right? That's what we're talking about.
And one of the ways to do that is fishermen, they can take these industrial trailers and the box trucks and only have them on the site as long as they're loading or unloading the, the boats. I think if you look at the specifics of the deed for that property, it says, uh, the dock shall be maintained in perpetuity for public recreational and coastal access purposes. Period. Commercial fishing is not mentioned anywhere in the deed. So I think what we're looking at is a, is a real usurpation of what that property was for. It's for recreational use and it's anyone who lives near there will tell you it's a full-time fishing dock for basically six, seven, eight boats. So if you want more parking, I would suggest let's move the box trucks and the trailers and you're gonna get I don't know how many more spaces that would be because they're, they're big. But they never leave, ever. So I don't think that's fair to the neighbors to have to deal with that nuisance. And I don't think it's legal.
And so this box truck scenario, which I don't know about.
Three, it takes up three spots. There's three trailers, uh, two trailers and a box truck that the harbor commission gave Lotso permission to put there. It doesn't have a refrigeration unit. The refrigeration unit comes from their Lotso's box truck over on Paris Condole's dock. So you're gonna gain three spots if the trailers move out of there. And that dock was built by federal money for fishermen, or else there'd be no dock there. It wasn't built for, for recreational people to use. I was the one that got the cement block put in there to utilize for the recreational people. The dock was built by the federal government with federal money for the fishing, or else there'd be no dock there.
I'm just reading from the deed here.
No, you can read from any deed you want, just like the paper you brought before from nineteen seventy eight. Erroneous.
Uh, I don't know. Before we, before we get going.
Go ahead.
Because this is far afield. And there's separate issues that are here. Now, I'm gonna say this because, you know, these implications always come in for matters of this nature. Um, but Mark and I don't have a conflict now. We may have a conflict. I understand work was done there that was beyond the existing limits of the parking lot. That's the issue for tonight. Um, notwithstanding anything else, I can tell you when there's a disturbance within the coastal feature, you're gonna need some kind of a permit from, from C R M C. I understand somebody's already been out. I didn't hear that from C R M C. I heard that from, from the town. So you need to do something with C R M C for this. Depending on what happens, we may have to recuse on it. But you have to act. That's what's on the agenda for tonight. That's something you have to do.
Yeah.
These separate issues, they probably have to be addressed in a, in a, on a separate, uh, agenda item if they need to be addressed. I have a motion. That's not something, by the way, that the C R M C would get involved in as to the use. Coastal's regulations go with what's done for disturbance in the coastal feature. These other issues that you're talking about as to use, that's separate. Yeah, so I have a motion and a second on the table. Mr. Brown, anything else about what's on the agenda?
I think, uh, that's it. That's about it. Take into account.
Appreciate that. Obviously, you can put stuff on the agenda for two weeks you like to talk about down there.
Thank you all for your time.
Love you all. I have a hand and come on up.
So, Felicity, what would, what would be your suggestion that you step back from this? You're not asking for any comments or any any kind of, uh?
The, the motion, the motion that you have on, on the agenda is appropriate. Depending upon, um, action that coastal takes in regard to this, we may have to recuse. This isn't something that was brought to our attention, by the way, by either client. I understand something happened over there that went beyond what your vote was. You need to do something about it. Depending on the response to what you do or whether you not do anything, then we may have to recuse.
Okay.
So it's premature at this time.
I just didn't want the vote, vote to be nullified because. You gotta speak up into the mic.
Thank you, Dr. T, Chair of the Harbor Commission. Actually, I'd like to use a model by, or pushing it, you know, based on conversations with C R M C since this top was issued. There does need to be a permit for the center for the extension of the double parking lot. We've received communication, uh, so we're taught this from C R M C that we need to additionally, if, if the plans are to replace the guardrails that usually have telephone pole guardrails along the beach. The two areas, once that, when you come down, it's kind of broke and take that right into along the beach. There's a guardrail.
Is the microphone on?
The green? Is it green?
You have a green light on it.
Start over. So, uh, we would like you to consider modifying your motion. Um, because based on conversations with C R M C, this actually would be three separate permits that will be required for some of the work we've been discussing. Um, the primary one obviously is for the parking lot to be extended. Once the town has thrown this woman here or the extent of that, C R M C can understand what the percentage of expansion is, uh, if requested. They have a basis for that application. Um, the harbor commission's also spoken through the council in the past about needing to limit people coming down driving on the beach. So when you come around the corner on Seconic Main Road, there's that large lot where the owner is actually mowed. It's mowed because the town wants to prevent people from better coming down the road, getting to the boat ramp. Um, having a blocking corner where immediately there's a city cut into the beach. And then another one just after that, where people come, either use the beach or unload their kayaks. Um, so both of those two cut-ins, there had been recycled telephone poles that were used as guardrails to keep people from parking on the beach. Those are promoted away. Um, people to actually drive down onto the beach and then back into the brush somewhere else time to time. So we need to have a limit. People, you know, have to do that. Need to be able to preserve the amount of parking that they've always been afforded. Um, and we'd, we'd also like to do it in a way that people with kayaks can still walk through. So we don't want a continuous guardrail. So the suggestion has been, can we put boulders there that are seen appropriate or mentally neutral, um, but do the job of preventing people from driving on the beach. Those two cutaways are actually in two separate town lots. And C R M C, for any action that requires, you know, any kind of modification, C R M C is gonna wanna see a separate ascent application for each lot. So I don't have the numbers in my head right now. We can, we can. So I don't have the numbers in my head right now. We can, we can look them up. That is, the motion could be to apply to CRMC for a sense parking lot and two beach cutaways to prevent parking on the beach or driving onto the beach. That once the town decides how they're going to do this, decides how they're going to, you know, develop engineering plans, submit to CRMC, then the three application would be required.
Listener, I'll run this by you. I've made a motion to authorize application for CRMC permit, extend and upgrade the parking areas, kind of point. Is that enough?
Well, I'm going to tell you, I was unaware of this activity. So we're going to, we're going to have to recuse it. This is the time to recuse.
Yeah, the CRMC also, we did talk about representation and they said, in the town's application, the applications are generally from a public works department. And then signed by President of the Council signing the application to CRMC. And they told us, you know, in, in these three applications, you would have to recuse yourself.
Yes.
You know, recommend a lawyer to us, but you can have no involvement in our application process.
That's correct. And I'll be recusing with CRMC too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick?
Yeah.
I do know that there is an engineer in town who has helped the town in the past and he's available to help us for this process if we need.
Thank you for that.
I spoke to him. He said, depending on what your vote is, he could work with us.
Yeah.
Ben also talked to the ancient, he's going to get some drawings.
I'm going to draw my motion. Seconded it.
I did.
Oh, Gary, sorry, Gary did.
Okay, so that's I can make enough of a motion that is to what Benoit said, Mr. What Ben said.
God, did you keep that paper that I gave you? I think it's got the lot numbers on it. You don't know what lot?
You can look it up.
I can word it.
I make a motion that we extend the parking lot on lot four thirty and put necessary retaining boulders on two access lots to the beach on the east side of the beach.
And this is to apply for CRMC permit to do this?
And to apply, give this to CRMC for an ascent to do that with an engineering drawing.
Do I have a second?
Did you say that motion the way it's?
Yeah, I'm phrasing it a little differently.
Go ahead. Let's hear the motion again.
To authorize the application to CRMC for permit slash ascent to extend the parking on plat nine lot four thirty and to propose putting boulders on two access lots on plat nine on the east side of the harbor beach.
We change it to access points? They're not lots.
They are lots.
They are lots.
Thank you.
Tell lots and what's happening now, people with the kayaks come down. These lots used to be lots where all these lots were owned by fishermen, okay? Back in nineteen seventy-eight and nineteen eighty, the council at that time condemned the beach and took it by eminent domain used for fishermen's, supposed to be a whole fishermen's lot going along the whole thing, which never came to fruition. But each one of these access points were owned by a single fisherman, okay? And they were like fifty to eighty feet wide. So now there's probably three or four of them still left there. And two of them get used by the kayak people. And the problem is, is they're driving right down to the water, which is going to deteriorate the barrier beach. Once that barrier beach goes, there's no more road. Because it's all there is underneath that road is sand. So that's why we need to protect that barrier beach. And it's even got so bad that you could get guys come down there with jeeps and they go down on this access point. And then they'll come up the other access point and they'll park right there, right down on the beach itself. So we're trying to protect the beach.
Thank you for the explanation of the motion. I second the motion.
Thank you, Bob.
Further discussion?
I have a question. So Ben indicated that there's a ratio or a formula perhaps that CRMC looks at when they're considering applications for an expansion in this, in this kind of a situation? Is that what, is that what you were saying?
Conversation we had was they, they will be looking at the lot, they'll be looking at how much it's going to grow, making sure that there's adequate buffer against the reeds, there's adequate buffer against the blue throid line that goes through the very edge of that property. It's a barrier beach. They make their determination. It's, it remains a relatively small thing and there's a good chance that they'll be incent. From my understanding, the extent of where the digging began is beyond what I had talked about to my knowledge. But again, it got beyond, you know, our talking about it. I became focused on the sign plan that the police chief asked for. And on the execution side, you know, people being involved. It's right now, the CRMC is being, you know, very receptive to us putting together an engineering drawing, which we never had. And then putting together the the request, rationalization. We need to do this and then they'll make their determination.
And would the, would the rationale for that come from the harbor commission? Would you guys be drafting that for us?
We, we have to support you, right? So, so the commission is advisory group to you. We have no party with execution despite what some people are writing. He simply our advisory to you. You ask us to give an opinion and we will. The documentation I sent you earlier this week is where, you know, we initially tried to make everything fit. And when the fire department looked at it, they felt that we were going to be crowding that lot to such an extent that being able to get urgency to the town doctor for that too would be potentially a problem. And we heard from Mr. McIntosh that, you know, he feels that every foreign holder should be toyed apart down there. So that's already over a hundred people. So it's, I mean, there is a lot of pressure. A lot of stakeholders, there's a lot of constituents, you know, they have, you know, true need for that. And what I'm trying to do is give you, you know, the voice of all of those people and then a recommendation for what you do with that and how you do that is all up to you folks.
Understood. Thank you.
Motion on the table.
Any further questions? Comments? All favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you all. Consideration of conditional employment for a recruit within the police department?
Motion to allow Miguel Severson to go forward with whatever he needs to do with the chief.
Isn't it a conditional?
Receiving.
Right. Conditional offer employment by the town.
Second that.
Governor, all favor?
Aye.
Consideration of contract for computer service to John Gabriel and David Vernagliano Everlasting Designs. Contract vendor. I'll take a shot at this motion. Want to make a motion to charge the finance director to draft a contract offer on Gabriel and transition plan, including the current IT vendor Everlasting Design to present to the council at its August seventh meeting. Second?
Second it.
Go ahead. Danny, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? I'll say I, thank you. Board of light commissioners, application for a class F one, one-day retail beverage license received from Meeting House Spirits LLC for a music event in Richmond Field.
Motion to approve with all, with all necessary state and local ordinances adhered to.
Second.
Discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Two, application for class F one, one-day retail beverage license received from Meeting House Spirits LLC for a music event in Richmond Field eighty-five South of Commons, August tenth, twenty twenty-five, in conjunction with the LC three fifty celebration.
Motion to approve with all state and local ordinances adhered to.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Communications, request from the United Congressional Church to use the town landing on it twenty twenty-five at ten AM for its annual beach service.
Make a motion to approve that the congregational church get that.
What I said.
Congressional.
I'll second that.
I read a lot of words. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Application for a mobile food establishment license received from Blount Fine Foods, DBA Bull and Clam Shack Food Truck.
Blount.
What I said?
Blount.
Is it blount?
It's blount. It's blount.
Motion to approve with all state and local ordinances adhered to.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's oh for two. Let's see how it is here. Application for a food, mobile food establishment license. I'll just ice cream and then ice cream trust.
Motion to approve with all state and local ordinances adhered to.
Second.
Go ahead. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For requests received from the Narragansett Bay Wheelman to use Adamsville Ball Field as a rest stop, September seventh, twenty twenty-five, from eight AM to four PM during its annual bicycle ride throughout town.
So this is just to use the ball field, not to be allowed to run through the town?
Oh, no. Your pages, they tell you what routes they have through town. This is what they do annually, but they also annually for the, for the stop.
Motion to allow them to use the ball field and to do their ride through town with concurrence from the fire and police chief.
Second.
Discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent? Anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
You're going to pull one, you said?
I don't know.
Motion to move approve the consent calendar as written unless anybody would like to pull anything for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of bills?
Shouldn't I pay the bills?
And what a bill it is.
Second.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.